Welcome to thank you for another day. We thank you for another opportunity to lift your holy righteous name because you are worthy to be praised. We thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. And now we pray for special guidance and understanding in operating this great city that we live in. We thank you for this great country that we live in as well. Now we just asked you to bless us in the way that you see us standing here. We need you, we can't make this shit without you. Give us the wisdom that can only come from on high. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. A present to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll be February 27th, 2024, City Council reporter, and have a roll call.
Mr. Stringer?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Lanson?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Here.
We do have a form, therefore we'll proceed. Next on the agenda is the minutes from the February 13th council meeting. We need a quick second.
Make a motion to the minutes being approved, designated.
Okay. Brings us to item seven, which is resolution.
Yes.
Oh yeah, excuse me, I skipped one.
I make a motion as well that we suspend the rules and ordinances to further do business tonight.
Second.
Mr. Stringer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lanson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Cooley?
Yes. Now, item number seven, resolution 2023-502.1, I'm going to amend the contract of Jason Stewart, Parks and Recreation Director, will be extended that for 60 days simply because of the time of me taking the office of mayor and all the other things that's been going on, I have not had the time to have that negotiation with him. And that allows me that additional time to get that done. And.
Do you want me to read that?
Yes.
A resolution for the city of Smith Station, Alabama authorizing Mayor Cooley to extend the existing 2023 contract for 60 days with Jason Stewart as Parks and Recreation Director of Programs and scheduling for the city of Smith Station.
And note that we have to have something so that we can pay him for what he's doing out there right now. So this will allow that work to continue until such time as we can do these negotiations with a time limit of 60 days. I'm assuming you passed the resolution 2023-502.1. Second, Mr.?
Mr. Stringer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lanson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Cooley?
Yes. All right, item general business, item A. At the last council meeting, we had the audit report from our outside parking firm of Robinson and Grimes. We did not do that at that time. We need to do that tonight. I've obtained a motion.
I made a motion.
Accept.
Second.
Mr. Stringer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lanson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Cooley?
Yes. All right, that brings us to item B. And it's merely a notation at this point, that letters have been sent to Castlewood and 12 Oaks subdivision about the traffic coming technologies and techniques that we're going to be, possibly be using in their communities, just to get their, give them full knowledge of that. Anything you need to address on that, Ms. Farm?
We have Ms. Blaint here tonight, she was the one that brought it. She and I stay in pretty decent contact with each other, so. Letters out, you received yours, they're probably going to be coming in this week, and we're planning on the 26th meeting to discuss it.
Okay. All right.
One question before we, of all of this. Did the letters go, I understand the letters didn't go to Castlewood then 12 Oaks, would the speed bumps be put in both? Just Castlewood? Just 12 Oaks?
Well, there's one road in, one road out for both subdivisions, so. The 12 Oaks had already pretty much approved for them to go in there, but since we're kind of trapping Castlewood in there at the tail end of that, it was unfair that they had to say so whether or not, you know, this came to be or not. And we're not taking a vote on it tonight.
We're going to do that on the 26th.
We'll do that on the 25th. But I, just, this was just an acknowledgement that letters have been sent.
And we hope the letters will be ready by then.
Yeah. Okay. That brings us to item nine, recommendations from the planning commission.
Hold on, you have, you have one added.
Oh, that's right, now, should be, item C, the storm shelter.
I recommend that all the storm shelter, it has two bunches wigs, like we have a budget two, which is.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hold on, I have enough.
Okay.
Mr. Stringer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lanson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Cooley?
Yes. All right, you notify all parties that need to be notified?
Sure will.
Now, that brings us to item nine, recommendation from the planning commission, initial data send a zoning order, sub- amendment in to change our sign notice fee, and, well, a resolution for that sign to be placed. And this is a first reading, and there had some questions as to whether or not that was sufficient enough fee for that signage. And I think that when we discussed that in the work session, we kind of agreed that that should be doubled. Do we need a?
Probably so.
Yeah, let's get it on record. Mr. Stringer, I think you were involved in that discussion, would you make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the. Second.
No, the increase in the fee?
Increase, yes.
Okay.
So this is just a recommendation back to the.
Right, this is going to be a recommendation back to the planning commission. They will then review it, send it back to us for final approval. So this is not a done deal tonight, but it's just simply, they, they asked us to be included in the pricing of the sign to the contractor. So I got a first, have a second.
Okay. You have Stringer, Lanson. And then roll call. Mr. Stringer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lanson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Cooley?
Yes. And that brings us to the fun part of the act. We have two presentations to make tonight. First of which is to Jeffrey Godfrey, who's president.
Ooh, I'm recording.
Here, you can use mine.
I need somebody to.
Mine right here.
I think I can access your camera.
Yeah, you can, okay. Whereas the intervention of emergency medical services can literally make the difference between life and death in many emergency medical crises, and whereas professional organizations and providers of emergency medical services will research and improve and adopt their skills as new methods of emergency treatment or development. And whereas emergency medical service team can at any time during any emergency be called on to sacrifice their own lives in the performance of life-saving duties. And whereas the intervention of firefighters and paramedics can literally make the difference between life and death in many emergency medical crises. And whereas the community benefits daily from the knowledge and skill of these trained professionals. Now, therefore, reassert the support of every individual, agency, and institution that play a role in delivering emergency medical care to people who live and work in the city. We give this proclamation to Mr. Godfrey. And also the plaque here.
Okay.
All right, and next up is Adam Myers. Whereas firefighters are engaged in one of the most dangerous hyper patients in the United States. Whereas firefighters can at any time and during any emergency be called on to sacrifice their lives in performance for life-saving duties. And whereas the intervention of firefighters and paramedics can virtually make the difference between life and death in many emergency medical crises. And whereas the community benefits daily from the knowledge and skill of these trained individuals. And now therefore, our citizens and leadership care the message of respect for firefighters and emergency medical services personnel and responsible citizenship. We give this presentation to Ms. Farm. Hold off time.
Okay. Thank you.
That brings us to item 11. Can I use that? Ms. Farm.
Profit loss budget, January 2024. Total ordinary income, total property rental, $5,010.38. Adverbal taxes, $80,791.49. Business license income, $72,489.56. Franchise fees received, $46,045. Public works revenue, $20,833.33.
I need to stop you right there, will you just take a note?
And let's look at that, that's the same total as December 23.
So the 2833, that's the same as that number of Decembers was.
So we just look at that later this week. Sure. Sales and use tax income, $85,930.47. Wholesale gasoline revenue, $16,852.52.
We don't have a call out, it's not highlighted, but can we also call out our income for exits? I think that's where, now, what I don't know is if we have to pay anything from that. But I mean, it says right now our total income is 702,000, which is great, but I, I don't know if we've got, you know, bill that we've got to pay.
Yeah, that's a random question.
Right.
Yes. So as far as expenses go, total administrative department, $61,604.9. Total finance and revenue departments, $20,848.94. Total parks and recs departments, $33,164.98. Total public works department expense, $61,943.1. Have a net income of $126,027.19. We weren't able to do the last quarter of December for solid waste. The income for the last quarter of 2023 was $140,536.91. Total expenses was $134,361.40. The net income for the last quarter was $6,175.51.
Okay, it does, Green, you do give us a part call before.
But we need to, we need to approve that, yeah, we do, we need a first and second on both of them. On the general fund.
I'll make a motion, but I just need, you know, once it's, once Bernie gets back with me on that, the one I asked about.
Second.
Okay, and then the environmental, I need one on that also, please.
Make the motion to approve the item number four. Second.
Okay, just. Okay.
First, I want to thank y'all for helping us recognize two of our, our folks. Couple things I want to point out about their accomplishments last year. Adam's one of our volunteer members, and I was looking at some data today before I, I came up here and ran about 3,000 calls last year. And Adam, by himself, ran 891 calls, so I'm right at 30% of the calls we were dispatched to, he was on last year. So he's, he's definitely one of our most active volunteers, so, you know, giving him a little bit of recognition is very, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
So Mr. Godfrey, he was one of our initial EMS crew members that we hired. He is currently waiting to get in recruit school. He's passed CPAP, which is the physical agility test, recruit school passed his first try. So we're, we're proud of both of these guys and their accomplishments moving forward to where they go. So, just some updates from us, we're still in the middle of our financial audit, expect to have those results, we're hoping by the beginning of March, but it's looking like it's going to be more towards the end of the month before we get those. So once, once that's completed, we'll make sure y'all get a summary of, of what their, their report says and everything. We're planning to, we hired four part-time firefighters. They're planning to start Monday. They're going to work kind of a day shift, their availability is from 8:00 a.m. to 8: 00 p.m. Monday through Friday. So we're, we're trying to get some more hired, but we, we glad when these start and get a little bit of help, because we're, we're staying busy. So we're excited to have those, and we're still on track, still planning to have shift running 24/7 by the end of the calendar year. So we're still on track to accomplish those things.
What's your total goal of firefighting in China?
As far as full-time?
Yes.
Full-time right now, we're looking at about six, so it'd be two on shift per day, running three shifts.
Do we have, you're the only full-time right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Other than our, our two, two folks on the handles, they're on shift every day. I'm the only, only full-time fighter.
And, but the sixth was firing on them?
Yes. So, and those are, like this year so far, we're, we're at 544 incidents as of this morning, which is average about nine and a half per day. So adding those additional staff is going to help decrease our no-response number, which our folks are working very, very hard, we're still keeping that under 6%, which is zero is, is what I want, but 6% right now, that's acceptable.
Would you come down from?
15 to 30, depending on the year. So paid staff has drastically decreased that number, and additional staff will continue to decrease it, so. Last thing in my report is we have, we have identified, I guess, some needs in the department, so, you know, one of the things that we're, we're looking at with the additional staff is we've got 11 sets of turnout gear that are non-compliant. They're non-compliant due to expiration date or damage. So, you know, I guess I've, I've come to the council tonight with a request for some help, to purchase some additional sets of turnout gear, so that we can, we can make sure we're keeping our folks in, in safe, compliant gear, so that they can do their jobs.
Could you explain to the council what the turnout gear actually is?
So the turnout, when, when we say turnout gear, we're talking everything from boots to helmets, so boots, pants, gloves, jacket, no max hood. So was it about five or six different things that make up a set of turnout gear?
And I've been talking with Chief Blake for a while, they've been needing the turnout gear for a while.
Okay. For the council's sake, what is estimated cost of set of turnout gear?
An estimated cost of turnout gear, just boots, pants, gloves, helmet, no max, is about $4,200 a set.
And I would, I mean, I think we can just say for my finance, we'll take that on to our next meeting, we'll talk about it in our finance meeting, and then, you know, we'll, we'll let you know, but we need to review some things.
No, that's, that's understandable, so.
And we have supported the fire department before with equipment that we need, so this is, is not anything new.
City has been very supportive for us in the past with the equipment.
And you just dispatched an act.
I haven't checked mine yet. Mine just.
I'm on the app with the, the fire EMS, and especially quite busy.
I had a couple folks right after you got it, said, what's the mayor doing getting in route to this call? I'm like, it's okay, it's okay, but if he shows up, you just greet him with a smile and a face and say hello, so.
Leave that to y'all. I was a, part of the early fire department, when it's back in the friendship days, I was a volunteer with that, so I, I have some interest in that area, so.
Well, thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, it's time for public comments. Would you like to sign that?
No, sir.
Okay. Council member reports.
I do have one that I wanted to talk to y'all about, but I was probably cursed, and I'm going to need some help from you. And we'll discuss it more, there's no action, of course, but did get a call today from some concerned and some dedicated folks about our soccer, the needs for our soccer, especially during football season when we have football going on, and how we keep soccer going year-round. The one thing that I would like to see if we could do, I just don't know, is just, I don't know, I don't know that there's a lot of available land, but I'm, you know, just kind of on the lookout for 10 acres, 12 acres within the city. So Kirsten, I may get with you, just trying to.
Is there some you want to buy, or, or just use?
Oh, we'd have to purchase it? I mean, you're not, we have just used land.
We would have to.
I got a little bit.
Enhance the profit to, you know, to the fields.
Right. Because they would want to invest, you know, they want to invest like a, a full-on investment where they can get, you know, money, people pay, you know, people donating services, equipment, and actually, you know, and I know, you know, what I told this individual is nothing that the public and you guys don't know. We did purchase land, we thought we were going to do something, you know, soccer, that did not happen. We, you know, since gotten rid of that land. So, you know, I think as a council, we just, you know, that's one of the things we may need to start looking at in our long-term plan or something like that.
And while you're on that subject, I, I totally agree with that, but also, these fields are being consumed almost daily by league play of some type, regardless whether it's football, baseball, or soccer, or whatever. That, we're not providing any service for our everyday citizen. And one thing that has been brought to my attention is pickleball. Hope I could just open a brand-new facility and it's, if you've ever seen it, it's awesome. But I'm not asking for anything on it, just think about it. And again, we'd have to find some land suitable for it to begin with, but just put that in your, as they always say, goes, in your pipe and smoke it for a while and see what we can do to help both of these situations out.
Also, we had talked about, about three or four, five years ago, about putting a pavilion at the park. I know we have a pavilion out here, but we had talked about putting a pavilion there that could probably seat about 100, 150 people without a cost to, to any pavilion, except them calling in, preserving it, that the public can use. And we talked about putting it in that area, where they had to send their citizens home and often in that area there. That would be nice, to, to have a function to, to, in a public place, they, they reserve it, probably something like a center out there, or center out over there, they don't even have to sit on the feed, but not, that's a tenement.
And just as a preliminary note, Kirsten and Cindy and myself met with a lady yesterday that's interested in doing some grant writing for us. And we're very early stages, we've made no commitments whatsoever, and, but she's very enthusiastic, and we've asked her to come up with a proposal for us, and we'll address that at some future time. But that may be where we can get some of these additional resources for these things like that, Parks and Recreation. There's a ton of money for, for athletics and type of things like that out there, we just got to know where it is and how to apply for it.
Especially, you know, when you're talking about the citizen, they don't have to be teammates, players, anything, but any public citizen can come and utilize this facility for different occasions, different things.
The old life of the facility, for example, is open 24/7.
Right. And then you're going to thank the, the stuff that came up, last month, as you know, we, because of the weather, we canceled the MLK Day. Kirsten and myself have talked about the day, and this year we're going to do something that's maybe a little bit different, and it's going to be a little further up in the air where we won't worry about the weather like we did in January. We're going to try to move MLK Day this year only, for right now, it's a trial period, MLK Day and Earth Day on the same day. That is, will be sometime in April at that point, we talked about April, we had set the exact date, but we will set it and get it out, hopefully within a month prior to the date that we're going to plan on having.
Only other thing, our zoning meeting, keep me honest, because I wasn't there, but we've moved it from next Tuesday, we usually do it the first Tuesday of the month, it will be on Thursday, that's due to the election. So we, we do have an election coming up on Tuesday, so our zoning meeting will be moved into Thursday, which is March the 7th, here, same time, but it, it is no longer on the 5th, just for the month of March.
Are we still holding, maybe for zoning?
The regular adjustments.
We always do it on the first.
We're working on it.
We're working on it. Still a working process.
Yeah, it's just the applications are big, but.
Yeah.
So they're, it's just applications.
Okay. If there's nothing else, and the motions go into executive session to discuss opinion and litigation at the request of our attorney?
Make a motion that we go into executive session to, on, can, delegation.
I second. Do we have a timeframe?
10:15. You guys think.
You said 10:15.
Yep. Yes, we got the first, okay, I want to take a roll call. On executive session, Mr. Stringer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lanson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
All right, we'll have to call our guests to please step outside. You're welcome to come back in at the conclusion of the executive session. And no action was taken. And at this time, we'd like to recognize our media beam back there. Don't remember the gentleman's name? Okay. That being done, how, and a panel motion, we, but.
Just before, just before we make the voting, uh, I guess, March 13th, or March 12th, is the next, council meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Did you have on your calendar that I maybe put it on the wrong day? City employee meeting at five o'clock?
Yeah.
That is the personnel...
Personnel, personnel meeting.
At five o'clock. Then we'll do work session at five-thirty and then meeting at seven.
Okay, I just wanted you to have the time.
Yes, sir.
All right, you want it, please.
I make a motion, would you?
Second. We are, Jim?